Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council Agenda Review Meeting. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Lambden.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. At this time, we'll turn over to the city administrator, Alex Scott.
Thank you, Council President. We have nothing for October 27th or November 3rd, so moving to the draft agenda for November 10th. First up, we have Elizabeth Shadle to brief consent agenda items 12 and 13.
Wow, I didn't think I'd get first up, but here I am. Good afternoon. So I'm here to brief two outside special counsel contracts for legal counsel. The first one, number 12, is with Eder McMahon. This is in relation to our outside rate case, and we talked about this at the, I think it was, executive session on October 6th. This is the class action against the city of Spokane regarding the outside city water rates. So we're set for trial on December 8th. We're still, our settlement discussions were not successful, but we're still talking settlement. So we're adding more money to that contract so we can pay our bills. So that's the first one. Any questions on that one? The second one is a contract that's somewhat related to the Dorgan matter. It is the litigation filed by the insurance company of the state of Pennsylvania. So years ago, the city retained or had insurance with this company, and as part of the Dorgan matter, there may be an opportunity, or there may be a right for the insurance company to reimburse the city defense costs. And the insurance company has filed litigation against us to have the court say that they're not responsible for any defense costs. So this is retention of an outside attorney that specializes in insurance work to represent the city and defend us.
Great.
Any questions?
Seeing none, thank you, Libby.
Thank you.
Next up, Don Kinder to brief Resolution 2025-0092.
I don't know, are there specific questions? I know Ariel was here and briefed last week, and I've got Jason here with me. Ariel had to leave this afternoon for an appointment, but I'm happy to answer questions if there's questions, or give a general update if that's what's desired.
Any requests? No general updates, no questions on special market conditions?
I think we've talked about it.
We've talked about it. Thank you, Don and Jason.
Thank you.
I know you guys were happy, weren't you?
All right. Next up, Andreas Gargada to brief Resolution 2025-0095.
Thank you, council. This is that community days, community engagement resolution. I sent out a sponsor substitution last week that had some kind of minor changes. It specified who would kind of be in charge of organizing and planning those community days. It dropped the amount from once a month to at least seven. It also requested that the administration look at the viability of having free parking outside kind of whenever there's a legislative session. Those are kind of the main changes. Yeah.
Thank you, Andreas. And I've already shared this with you. My concern is this really something that should be on the council side since it's community engagement. I did have the opportunity to have a conversation with Office of Neighborhood Services. They should be in this. They would love to take this on as part of their additional duties with neighborhood councils going forward. So I'm just really looking at council duties and where we support, and really what should be on the other side of the House. Those are just my concern, and who would hold this work as we go forward.
Yeah, for sure. Some of that new language in the resolution talked about, it's some from the Equity Subcommittee, Director of Communications and Community Engagement in Council, as well as administrative staff. So that could be ONS, it could be, you know, anybody from the administration.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I would say, I think I already had Luis look at this one time as to what the cost would be to remove the cost of parking, so they should be able to get us that pretty quickly.
Yeah, it should be some pretty quick maths on that, and then as long as you, the council, is willing to, you know, stomach that, that lost revenue, then.
I'll say, my proposal on that originally was that we would basically validate the parking, so it's not just free parking around here, because then people going to a movie are going to take up all that free parking, as opposed to people coming in here, which is who we're trying to attract, and so.
Definitely, definitely, yep.
Councilmember Lambden.
Yeah, and that is the way the language is written around the parking, is that it would be some sort of validation mechanism. And when the math was run for once a month, I think it was around like $700 in total lost revenue, so it was pretty minimal.
Any other questions for Andreas? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andreas. Next up, Councilmember Cathcart to brief Resolution 2025-0097.
Yeah, we talked about this last week, essentially, and there is an amendment coming. Getting some support or help with that from Spencer. But basically, the purpose of this is to try to put a pause while we maybe reconsider how it is that we approach historic districts. There's no intent or desire to sort of eliminate this as an option, but really just rethink how we do it, how it impacts all the other priorities and things that we have going on in the city, and then also to think about how it is that historic districts will get on to the Plan Commission agenda and ultimately our agenda. There are requirements in code around work plans and things like that, and this is just to help make sure that we can get to a point where we're following a little bit more process. Do you have anything else to add, Spencer?
I mean, I think you've summarized things pretty well. I think one thing, one, I guess the advantage of clarifying that these districts need to go on to the work plan is that it allows council to be a little more engaged at the beginning of the process, rather than not hearing about it until the end. At that point, you're supposed to make a decision on something that ideally, I think you'd have some involvement in the outset. So that, to me, is the value of the Plan Commission work plan part of things.
We haven't talked about how this really will impact the historic district and what our inter-local agreement with the county looks like. There are some other, I think, some other nuances to this, and I'm concerned about how it impacts the application currently for their historic district.
Do you mean for the district that's up for consideration currently?
Yes.
I can't speak for Councilmember Cathcart. I don't think the intent is to impact the current proposal that's moving forward. It's trying to kind of establish ground rules for moving forward from there. I don't know if that's a fair.
And if the question is how it impacts just historic preservation overall, I mean, I think the ILA with the county precedes the creation of these historic districts, and so I'm not sure that there's an impact there, and it wouldn't really preclude historic properties from moving forward to the register as they do.
Councilmembers Oppone and Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, so just for clarity, would this impact Garland?
So the amended language, I don't think, has been circulated?
Not yet.
Okay. I worked with Councilmember Cathcart to amend some language based on some of the concerns that I heard last week, and that is the, those are the changes that I think we just ran through. The only change there that could impact a place like Garland is that in order to move forward, the first step would be to get on the Plan Commission work plan. That's the point where council can be engaged, hear a little bit about what is potentially going to be proposed, add it to the Plan Commission work plan, and from there on out, the process is basically exactly as it is.
And given that Garland has been in process and all that, I would just, frankly, we can put language in there that sort of exempts it from this, but going forward, the idea would be that new versions of this historic districts would require them to be included on the work plan.
I would suggest it could also be accomplished in the resolution to add it to the work plan if Garland is a specific concern. So we could, I could work with you on an amendment, or further amended language, to specify that the Garland historic district is added to the work plan, and then it is sort of a moot point.
Councilmember Bingle.
I was just going to shout out City Cable 5, throwing up the acronym so people know what we're talking about. Well done.
Any other questions for Spencer? Thank you.
They are remarkably quick with those.
They're very good.
It's amazing. All right. Last but not least for me, Jackson Deese to brief Ordinance C36778.
Good afternoon, council. I think I briefed this last week, and I think most, if not all of you, met with some stakeholders this week who were in town to talk about this ordinance. Councilmembers Oppone and I met with them, and I think we can expect an amendment to be run on this ordinance sometime this week, so.
Do you want to explain what that is?
Yeah, it seemed like the main concern was using public data in one of the sections it explicitly calls out, not allowing the use of public data for the creation of algorithms. And it seems like in California, they passed a state law that allows for that, and it's a point of litigation for the Seattle and King County versions of this ordinance, so.
A change would be to allow the use of public data, because it's.
Councilmember Dillon and Councilmember Cathcart.
Thank you. I'll just note that having worked through some of the thorny issues between landlords and tenants and how thorny that can get, I do appreciate a lot of the stakeholder input has been very amenable, and I think looking at this very, in a way that, again, I think is something hopefully that we can, you know, get behind where it is taking a lot of different considerations and to get it, to get it right, based on what other cities have done, other states where this hasn't worked. There has been lawsuits and there's been challenges. So I really appreciate all the kind of stakeholder feedback and happy to get that out to the rest of council if need be, from the Rental Housing Association to some of the other, I think it was RealPage, what they works on software and data sharing. They brought up some really good points as well, so, yeah.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, on that, I know Rental Housing Association had brought up concerns with regards to the whistleblower portion. Has that been amended at all or looked at?
Yeah, the version in the packet doesn't include that component, so, yeah. And the last thing I'll say is if you're really interested in antitrust law or freedom of speech concerns, reading about the RealPage litigation is very interesting, so, yeah.
Any other council member comments? And I was going to ask you, because when I met with some folks, it's like, what is the problem we're trying to solve here? And that's what I kind of went back to since after the state passed the cap on increases in rents. This is all public data, so I look forward to what is the issue we're trying to solve. So I look forward to another discussion with that or someone around that. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
All right. That now brings us to Mr. Wright for our final agenda for October 27th.
Thank you, Council President. We actually have changes to all three agendas that we're contemplating tonight, starting with October 27th. The first item is that Councilmember Lambden is requesting to defer consent item number one relating to LRADs to final consideration on November 10th, 2025.
Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to defer to the, Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, what's the purpose of the deferral?
Yeah, there was discussion with SPD earlier today around drafting some language for the implementation of these specific devices, so hoping to get some more information from them to bring before council due to some community feedback that we've received around this particular item.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, I'll add on that. So in all honesty, this was an issue that I had been following, was not as familiar with these devices, and there's been a couple issues in other cities where cities have had to settle with its use, where people might have experienced hearing issues, dizziness, nausea, a variety of symptoms in how they are used. The way it was written on the agenda sheet for the purpose of, well, crowd control, I guess you could say, raised some concerns with how that also comports with state law. So state law does have some regulations about how they are used, for instance, in crowds. So those are some questions that we definitely need to address that I would like to see addressed before we move forward with this, so this will give us some good time for more discussion.
Thank you. And after speaking with Captain Wall, he goes, there was no real urgency. They would like to move forward, but we thought in the interest of more education as to what this is, how they're going to use it, to get their policies and procedure in place of how they're going to implement it, I think that would just make the community feel better about this, and also as the educational tool. So it's a motion in a second to defer till November the 10th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes? Abstention, that is deferred. Thank you.
Thank you, council. The next item relates to Ordinance C36774. Councilmember Cathcart is requesting a motion to defer this ordinance relating to city council employees to final consideration on November 3rd.
Is there a motion, Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I will so move a deferral of Ordinance C36774 to November 3rd.
I'll second.
It's moved in second. Any comments?
The question again there is what's the purpose of the deferral?
Well, there are budget overlays with this item, and we have yet to be shared any real information on the budget. So to me, it makes a lot of sense that we would at least pair this with when we get that information, to have kind of all the facts in place.
It's been moved in second to defer to November 3rd. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes? Abstentions, that is deferred. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Next item, Council President Wilkerson is requesting in one motion to suspend the council rules and amend just Ordinance C36784 relating to the Hilliard Subarea Plan with the proposed planning staff amendment without triggering an automatic deferral of the item. And Spencer is walking up to explain what's going on on this one.
Yeah, this is just simply some language change in Section 3 of the amendment. That's the part that actually adopts the land use plan map changes. We heard from some of our mapping folks that it's helpful to be a little more specific about what the exact changes are in terms of acreage and from which land use designation to which other land use designation. So there's no substantial change, it's really just adding some language for clarity.
And this was circulated at 3:27, so.
I'll make the motion to suspend the council rules and amend just Ordinance C36784 related to the Hilliard Subarea Plan with the proposed planning staff amendment without triggering an automatic deferral of the item.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any other council commentary? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes? Abstention, that is deferred. Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Next item, Council President Wilkerson is requesting in one motion to suspend the council rules and add just the latest version of Ordinance C36785, the Safe and Accessible Public Spaces Ordinance, that I circulated this afternoon at 3:15, and it would be up for final consideration tonight.
So moved.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Oh, yeah.
Should we second first?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Clear that's 3:15 that that was circulated at, that's.
Correct.
Any other council commentary or clarification needed? Mr. Wright, did you want, could you just speak to the latest version? What was the specifics?
We corrected the title because we added a section on the three ordinance restoring SMC 1202-1004, which was stricken from the code earlier this summer, but we're not sure that made sense in light of some other issues. We corrected the language on obstruct so that we took out the reference to right-of-way because reference in there was kind of redundant. We added some changes related to transit facilities, took it out of the definition of obstruct and put it in the actual prohibition on obstruction where it made more sense. I think that covers all of them.
Okay. Councilmember Bingle.
Is this where it would be appropriate for me to ask my question of the administration?
Sure.
Sure.
All right. Mr. Scott, my question is, does the administration plan to enforce this ordinance?
Absolutely.
And are we going to prioritize that enforcement?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, there's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules with the latest version circulated by Mr. Wright this afternoon for final consideration on October 27th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes? Abstentions? We'll see that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council. We're moving on to the November 3rd agenda. Council President Wilkerson is requesting a motion to amend Ordinance C36752 relating to the public rules with the proposed Wilkerson Amendment. And I'll just move on. There's also a second amendment from Councilmember Cathcart, also relating to the public rules and ordinance. I will say that these amendments are compatible. You can pass either or both, both as the council sees fit, so it doesn't really matter which order you take them up in.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just a question for Chris, and it's your recommendation, though, that these be adopted into the ordinance?
Sure, and I think an explanation probably is in order. The longer time goes on and the longer we wait to pass a public rules ordinance, the more I tend to spot places that an amendment would be inappropriate to incorporate the new public rule requirements. So this is a case where on the Wilkerson Amendment, I found something related to smoking in public places, so we would make it clear that any public rules related to those would have to be passed according to the public rule process. Also related to MFTEs taxing rules, likewise, you would have, if you have a public rule, you have to pass it per the new process. The Cathcart Amendment is actually something a little different. The finance folks were a little concerned that we were going to be changing SMC 0803 relating to remittances of admissions tax, and I probably got a little zealous there in cutting out a lot of language, and they would like us to put it back in the ordinance and deal with it later, so not have that whole process subject to a public rule just yet, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chris before we move on? So at this point, I'll entertain a motion for the Wilkerson proposed amendment.
So moved.
Can we, Mr. Wright, can we do both at the same time? Would you prefer individual?
I think both is fine.
Okay. At that case, I'll entertain a motion for the amendments for the Wilkerson and the Cathcart.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded?
Seconded, yeah.
Any other commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
So here, this is an automatic deferral on this one?
I think it's fine, yes. It would be, because we're not suspending the rules for that purpose, but I don't see any harm in waiting.
Councilmember Cathcart?
And I know this has changed a couple of times, I'm trying to remember, is the provision in there about the lookback still in the ordinance? Because obviously, tonight, we might adopt something that contains references to public rules, wondering how that would intersect with this.
The current version provides that if the council approves by resolution a public rule within a year prior to this ordinance, that public rule can stay in effect for three years. So it's kind of grandfathered them for a short period of time, three years.
So if, just to follow up on that then, so if tonight we adopt an ordinance, goes into effect in a couple of days, and a public rule is generated, that would not have to come to council because this is...
Correct, not for three years.
Could a further amendment rectify that? Could a further amendment suggest that, no, it would have to come through council, a public rule?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to accelerate, you know, and change the savings clause for existing public rules, we can do that by amendment. And I would recommend that you do an amendment, because right now, and by the way, the ordinance wouldn't go into effect, this ordinance would not go into effect for 30 days. So anything they do in the next 30 days, any public rule that's adopted by council within the next 30 days is going to be saved by this ordinance. If you want to change that timeline and accelerate, you know, when those public rules come back, you could certainly do it by amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I guess another question along those lines, I mean, I guess to create maybe another amendment that does have some retroactive language to it. I'd be interested in how many ordinances that we've had over the last, you know, six months that had a public rule requirement. I mean, not that many, right? Several?
Not a lot, but several.
Okay, there's a motion with the second on the floor. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes, abstentions, that is passed. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, counsel. One more item for the agenda on November 3rd. Council President Wilkerson is requesting in one motion to suspend council rules and add just ordinance C 36789 relating to employee benefits, FPO, for final consideration on November 3rd.
Entertained a motion for a deferral?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, was there a second? Second. It's been moved in second. Any council discussion? I think we've already heard why we would like to have this in tandem with the budget. So all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes? No? So that's six to one. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Council President?
Yes.
Before you go on to November 10th, right, that's the next one, right? Councilmember Kletzky and I wanted to give an update on the hearing on the Cedar Street Vacation, so all the council is aware of that. We met for four hours last week with residents in the school, and the residents brought up a lot of their concerns, a lot of the concerns that you heard at the last hearing. And the school kind of clarified some of their things that they were working on to try to accommodate some of those concerns. And at the conclusion of the meeting, some residents didn't want to meet again, but there was enough residents that wanted to continue having a conversation and were towards a solution. So we will be asking the council to continue that hearing, or I don't know if it's possible if we can defer the hearing?
Yeah, I think you would, you would continue the hearing to whatever new date you selected.
We can't defer this hearing to another date.
I don't think you defer the hearing, you continue the hearing.
So that's kind of our update, so you all are aware. No, we, well, we continue, we have to hear it next week to then continue it, or can we can?
I don't think so. Let's go ahead and do it as a motion now, if you want to do it, to continue the hearing to whatever new date you want. And assuming against council's report, we'll check with legal afterwards to make sure it was okay to do it that way. Sounds fine to me, but...
What do you think? We didn't actually decide a date. We were going to try to meet within the next month, but anticipate it's probably going to take a while. So a month for now?
A month? We've got a month. Councilmember Dillon, then Councilmember Bingle?
Can I recommend maybe we wait until next Monday, because that is when we had the hearing continuing to, November 3rd, so it would be up on the agenda that night, and we can...
It's more of a question if council wants to hear residents again, or if you want to just wait. That's kind of the question.
They're going to hear it either way. Councilmember Bingle?
Can we be having this conversation without a motion on the table?
Can we what? I'm sorry.
Can we be having this conversation without a motion on the table?
You shouldn't, no.
Councilmember Spon, I'll entertain a motion?
We'll wait.
We'll wait, all right.
I don't think we got clarity of what we intend.
I'll make the motion for discussion purposes, because I want to say something on it. Till, what's the last, what's the last Monday in November?
The 24th?
24th, for discussion purposes.
How about December 1st?
Sure, December 1st. My point is that, okay, so now can I speak on this?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, so my point is that if...
Is there a second on the motion?
Yeah, he's seconding. So if we start to get too late, then you're like into holidays, and then I'm worried that if you push it off, so I think maybe three weeks is a little better than a month, because I think, I mean, after Thanksgiving and in between Christmas, I don't know if it's the same for you guys, but everything just sort of...
I would say based on the conversations, it's probably going to take longer than a month to build the trust, but it's more about getting them to continue having a conversation to address some... We didn't really get to like solutions, we came up with a couple of solutions, but it was mostly figuring out concerns, talking, and then the next one would be more solutions-oriented. So I'm guessing it's going to take longer than a month.
So Councilmember Spon was at the administration there in regards to their position on this vacation as well. I know we heard that once from Eldon, but I don't know...
Eldon and Nicole were there.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Councilmember Bingle?
Can I withdraw my motion?
With the body's permission, but you can do it by unanimous consent.
Councilmember Bingle?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Motion has been withdrawn?
Okay. Moving on to the November 10th agenda, Council President Wilkerson is requesting in one motion to suspend the council rules and add just ordinance C 36786 relating to the capital improvement program ordinance for first reading on November 10th and final consideration on November 17th.
Is there a motion on the floor to take it under consideration for the first reading on November the 10th?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Did you have a comment, Mr. Jacobi?
Thank you, Council President, counsel. I am just briefing you on this request, which is really kind of coming from me and finance staff with the switch of our finance and public safety meeting agendas, the actual SIP ordinance that Jessica briefed you on today. What she did was briefing you on a discussion item or an informational-only item. The ordinance itself is going to go to finance next week, and in order to get it queued up so that you guys consider it prior to the budget, we're just asking for this technical rule suspension to get it on the right track.
Any other commentary? It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes, abstentions, that is deferred.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
I'll just throw this out there, because I know there's been a couple of folks who've commented that they wanted to sponsor, but we have three sponsors on 36785, but I believe by motion, we could add additional sponsors, so if there was an interest in doing so, would love to entertain that for camping.
I'll make that motion.
Is the motion in a second?
Well, I think the motion is to add particular council members, right?
Yeah, I would make the motion to add myself as a sponsor to that ordinance.
Is there others that...
Is the procedure...
I'm going to move to add Councilmember Kletzky to it also.
I'll amend my motion, because nobody's seconding mine.
Are we admitting the motion to add all council members to this?
Does everybody want to be on it?
Should we just add everyone?
I'll make the motion to add every council member as a sponsor to C 36785.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes, abstentions, that is amended. Thank you so much.
Point of information, will it just say council sponsors, city council?
I don't know, I'll have to think about that.
Ms. Fister gets to decide.
Yeah.
We need one more motion to approve the agendas as modified.
Yes, and we're not having executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, so we are, at this point, we're going to go into exec...
Do you want to have your motion on the agenda first?
Yes, does I have a motion first and a second? All those in favor of the approved modified agendas as presented, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes, abstentions, that's great, thank you. We are now going to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the sale or purchase of real estate for how long? For 15 minutes. We will return in 15 minutes. We anticipate no action will be taken. We anticipate no action will be taken. (Music)
this time until 4:36 PM. No further action is anticipated when they return. Once again, City Council is extending their executive session five additional minutes until 4:36 PM.
That concludes our executive session. We are in recess until 6:00 PM.